Recording. Call me to order, this is a meeting of the Hampton Board of Selectmen and Board of Health. Townhouse Auditorium, August thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, six P M. This meeting is being conducted in person and remotely in conjunction with the governor's mandate of March of twenty twenty. We'll say the pledge of allegiance for after we do that, I wish everyone could then would stand have a moment of silence for the young men and women who were killed in Afghanistan or that are wounded for their valor and for protecting the right that we have tonight to be here. Thank you. The Girl Scouts plead lead the pledge of allegiance. Ladies? Thank you. First item on my agenda is the minutes from June twenty-first, regular meeting.
With the understanding that we are continuing to monitor the poll hearing and its progress, I'll make a motion to accept these minutes.
Second, hold on a favor. The minutes of the June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one, regular meeting.
Well, if we actually got an answer to my question about the police policies, if Bob can look into that.
Which?
My question about their policies, are they being kept on their website, our website, or just, I know we keep copying the office. With that being said, I'll make a motion to accept.
Second. Hold a favor. The executive session minutes of June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one.
Motion to accept.
Second. Hold on a favor. The minutes of the June, excuse me, July nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, regular meeting.
Make a motion to approve July nineteenth, twenty twenty-one minutes.
Second.
Hold a favor. In the minutes of the August sixteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, my like the timestamps.
That's amazing, makes you working on a lot.
What a report.
Other than that, besides correcting the location, make a motion to approve.
What?
Besides correcting the location, make a motion to approve.
Second.
Hold a favor. The next item on my agenda is the Girl Scouts of forty-one sixty is here to talk to us about a hand dryer donation.
Good evening, Board of Selectmen, and thank you for your time tonight. We are Hampton Girl Scout troops for oh one six oh, and we are working on earning our silver award, which is the highest honor that a Girl Scout cadet can earn. To fulfill the requirements for this award, we explored our community, identified an issue, and decided on a sustainable solution to the problem. During this process, we noticed that the public restrooms in our town hall presently utilize paper towels for hand drying. Did you know that paper towels produce two hundred and fifty-four million tons of trash each year? It sounds as to know that our beloved town hall contributes this problem. Yes, spent a lot of time researching this issue and all the possible solutions, and I've found that installing hand dryers would be the most beneficial solution. There are many features and benefits to having hand dryers, such as performance, savings, sustainability, and hygiene. Based on our research of all the available products we used, we would like to present you with a solution that is manufactured locally, will reduce the town hall's carbon footprint, is proven to be hygienic, and will also yield the cost savings. Our troop is prepared to pay for the purchase and installation of two Accelerator Model X hand dryers, one for each restroom. To raise money for our project, we have spent the last three years recycling bottles and cans that our community has donated to Scout Recycling in downtown. The Accelerator Model X hand dryers consume eighty percent less energy than conventional hand dryers and yield ninety-five percent cost savings compared to the cost of paper towels. They are building green approved and will reduce our town hall's carbon footprint. By using less paper towels, we would be reducing the amount of trees being cut down. To truly understand the environmental impact of this, you must take into account the raw materials used and energy consumed during the prop, the production, distribution, use, and disposal of paper towels. As Maya just shared with you, paper towels produce two hundred fifty-four million tons of trash each year. Excel hand dryers offer a seventy-five percent reduction in the carbon footprint versus even a hundred percent recycled paper towels. It takes seventeen trees, three hundred eighty gallons of oil, four thousand kilowatts of energy, twenty thousand gallons of water, and three cubic yards of landfill space for one ton of paper towels. With the new hand dryer replacing paper towels, there will be a visible difference in money costs. As seen on the board, paper towels are far more costly than the Accelerator hand dryer over time. Up front, a paper towel case costs around thirty dollars, while the hand dryer costs around four hundred. However, with this opportunity, our Girl Scout troop will be purchasing two hand dryers, one in each bathroom. Even at the start, with our donation, you're saving money right away. Over the span of ten years, you will be saving around thirty-seven thousand dollars, which includes annual folding replacement. Excel hand dryers can pay for themselves in only eight months. Not only that, but the hand dryer is proven to be long-lasting and self-efficient. Compared to paper towels, the hand dryers are low maintenance, a great investment in creating no mess. The Accelerator's HEPA filtration system has been proven to remove ninety-nine point nine 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 percent of viruses from the air stream, which is something extremely beneficial in this pandemic. The system also includes antimicrobial wall guards that are meticulously designed to protect the walls from water and the inhibit growth of bacteria. But don't take our word for it, let's see what the experts are saying. Both the World Health Organization and the CDC lists hand hygiene as the top defense against the spread of germs like COVID nineteen. What is proper hand hygiene? Thoroughly washing and completely drying hands. Wet hands spread a thousand times more germs than dry hands. Hand dryers dry hands in eight seconds, so let's clear the air. It's a myth that hand dryers spread COVID nineteen. For Johns Hopkins Medicine and the CDC, there is in fact no evidence that hand dryers spread COVID nineteen. As a matter of fact, these dryers, in addition to their HEPA filters, have been proven to remove ninety-nine point nine 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 percent of viruses from the air stream. These dryers also reduce touching and spreading infections. Eighty percent of infections are spread by touch. If you would like to learn more, please visit exceldryer.com/hygiene. If the town of Hampton chooses to accept our donation of these hand dryers, there are a few things you need to know. One, hand dryers run on electricity and the voltage is variable. The Accelerator Model X can accommodate whatever is in the building, for example, one hundred and ten or one twenty voltage. Two, the Accelerator Model X has temperature, speed, and sound controls to minimize noise so as not to disturb the library and its visitors. Three, HEPA filter replacement depends on usage, but manufacturers suggest annually. Four, maintenance is minimal and includes annual replacement of HEPA filters, which costs a hundred dollars each and wiping down the wall guards regularly as part of the restroom cleaning process. It would be an honor for our troop number four oh one six oh to donate two Accelerator Model X dryers to be installed in the restrooms of the Hampton Town Hall. This concludes our presentation for this evening. We would like to thank you for your time and consideration. If anyone has any questions, we have a representative from Excel Dryers, Mr. Paul Marcus, here with us tonight.
Well, thank you. You said it was an honor for you to donate them, it was an honor for, it's an honor for us to have you all here this evening, thank you. HEPA filters.
Yes, sir.
So now they take the air in, how's it work?
Yes, we brought a demo here, so just like any other filter of the year, there's an air tape valve underneath that brings the air in, goes through the filter, and then it comes out clean.
And how often do you typically change the filters?
So, that's a tough question to honestly answer, depending on the air quality of the building. Generally speaking, manufacturer doesn't want to purchase those, the actual filters themselves. So you're looking at more or less a year, but I would recommend just to check it periodically to find out how long, for example, in my own home, I change my filters monthly, even though they need to be changed monthly. It might be that they only need to be changed every six months or twelve months. You don't know until you actually.
It's easy to tell visually?
Oh, we have L E D lighting that'll give you a code to let you know when it needs to be changed. In addition to that, the accelerator comes with pre-filter, which is actually going to help extend life of the HEPA filter that's in there. But our L E D codes will let you know when something needs to be made, it's something needs to be addressed.
Yeah, and changing the filter for someone like me who can't even change a light bulb.
Pretty straightforward, I'd be more than happy to show you, do it today, like, you got a demo right there.
Can you show me?
Absolutely.
Show me.
So, I'm on my wife's seat. Right, so there's two screws, it's called tampons, it's screws, so I had to get the special key. Okay, we're gonna lose, okay, well, we're right down the street.
I'll stop at your office, Paul.
Yeah, we're right down the street. So that's just move on, you try. It's a, this, uh, this, uh, well, it's a, this is a demo, so it's a plug-in version, it's a hard wire. We use electric. Use that. So this is the pre-filter that goes on top, so as you can see, it's just pretty straightforward. Easy as that. I don't think you need an engineer, but hey.
You're right, those screws.
Yeah, right, exactly.
If we use a library, change that.
There you go. And here's the L E D lighting.
So the closing.
Right. Like so many codes.
Any other questions from the board?
No, I just want to pride the four oh one six oh troop for their need to, attention to detail and finding a problem and finding the solutions. I think it's great, we appreciate it.
And thank your parents, really, as well, for being here and supporting you. But, you know, this is what really we like seeing in the town of Hampton. You know, the scout troop is vibrant, it's, you know, looking for solutions, and that's great.
Can we get a photo with the, of the board with the troop?
Sure. Do you guys have any planning board experience? How do you want to do it? Stand, yeah, stand back here, back.
Stand behind us?
Stand behind you, that'd be great. What?
Don't fold them.
All right, here we go.
All right.
Get in the order of your, how you guys.
Oh, yeah, your voice, your presentation.
I think you should take them to your next trade show.
Yeah, I'm already scouting them up.
Oh, yeah.
Is this here for a reason? Can I move this?
Everybody.
Well, we got to, we gotta wait on.
Using paper towels.
No dryers?
Well, it takes a lot with the paper towels.
Well, we just replaced the long roller one we used to have. Absolutely.
Why don't you guys?
John.
To your side to mark.
All right.
Come on this side of the silence. You get her with the silence, you got everybody.
Nope, she's good, yeah, everybody's good. All right. We'll just sign a little further out for me? Thank you. All right, everybody, big smiles, let's see, nice smiles, good faces. Good job, guys.
Hand dryers.
I just can't imagine motion in the board to accept the donation.
So move.
Hold a favor. Thank you.
Thank you all.
B F W turkey shoot.
Commander of the B F W in Hampton, um, just coming down here to request permission to do our annual shoots that we have done for numerous years, with the exception of last year. We have all our same procedures in place for safety, we've never had an issue down there, gun signing, sign out, the whole entire, the tarp that goes up for the sound barrier for Down River, starting, I believe it is September twelfth, ending November twenty-first, and then, which I would like to do a new shoot this year, right before Christmas, December nineteenth. Try to get some more families down there to raffle off prizes for something for Christmas.
Oh, it's just been going on for?
I know it's been a big, long-running heritage.
I.
So, decades.
Uh, before Brandon.
Yeah. What's that?
Before you.
Oh, yeah, literally, it's, it's been going on for a long, long time. Last year was the first year we weren't able to do it.
Having, having been around before, any, I mean, obviously, the Shankles were the people who came, they had concerns about the noise in the past. Have you heard from them in the past couple of years?
No, we haven't, not since we put up that tarp, that tarp, that tarp was a good area.
Mitigating quite a bit of the noise coming out.
Right, right. Another thing I'm doing this year is all my event staff that are helping will have high vis on, so they're easy to identify if anybody has questions. We've never done that in the past, but for safety procedures, that's what I'm doing this year.
Are they firearms instructors, or are they?
Most of our veterans that run it have, um, health insurance. And not only that, but we're all veterans, so.
I will echo what Brandon said, you know, in the years they've done it, there's never been a mishap. You know, there, people are concerned about, wow, there's alcohol. They are so on top of the game down there.
Um, since I, since I became a member down there in twenty sixteen, I've pressed on it hard, but the note, we don't allow alcohol outside. You can drink inside, but you can't come out onto the deck while there's guns out there, no ifs, ands, or buts. Um, we also have people along the railing that hand out the shelves that make sure no one's, when we're taking on the targets across the river, to make sure that no one's touching a shotgun. Yeah, there's one shot, you, you have to go up, get your ticket stamped, and you get a shelf.
Just shotgun.
Josh, yeah, just shotgun, four-ten, twelve-gauge, sixteen, and twenty. We do have house guns, obviously, but there is, people bring their own. So we have them sign in, sign out, that way there's no mishaps, no, where am I gonna go, so.
Yes, the only, only question I have, I, I don't have a problem with it, I think it's great, but, um, how do you mitigate people in the bar that they're not drinking while they're shooting?
No, they can drink while they're shooting, they can't be outside drinking, you can't have alcohol outside. Um, like I said, once, when I became a member down there in twenty sixteen, it wasn't really pressed on before that to make sure people weren't drinking too much and shooting. I've actually told people they can't shoot anymore because they have drank too much. So that's something that I've been hard on since I've been a member down there. So, and we usually have seven volunteers, eight volunteers down there, so everybody, there's eyes everywhere. And our bartenders are very good with that as well.
And if people sign up ahead of time for the shoot?
No, there's no sign up, you just come in, come in, do your, pay for whatever rounds you want, and then you leave as you will, so.
Now, the, the last time we just came up, uh, you wanted, they wanted to do a Christmas time shoot also. And I, we deferred that because our concern was snow and ice and parking at that particular time.
I really don't see that being a concern, having seen, you know, how they maintain their facility there, you know, they clear it properly, they, you know.
Right, yeah, it's, we, we have Billy Button Town come through, sand salt it, I also plow it.
Right, the key thing would be, you know, obviously during the fall time, you would get some parking along the street.
Right, I don't.
At this time here, you know, we would really enforce.
Right.
No on-street parking.
Oh, of course, of course, um. What's that, sir?
You shoot skeet, what, what are you, what are you shooting?
We shoot, we, we put targets up on the pavilion and shoot at the targets. But as for, yeah, no on-street parking, a hundred percent, I mean, the parking lot's pretty big down there, I don't think it's gonna be a big hit, but it was something that, hey, if we're allowed to do it, we're gonna try to do it, but it's just a day in there, I want to try to do it, but it's, and it's not gonna be long either. I'm only gonna run, I'm not gonna run a whole entire length of, you know, twenty rounds. I'm only gonna do a special eight rounds, it's quick, in and out, easy, probably done by three o'clock. It won't be, it won't be an extended period of time.
All right, so we have a permit here, it says no firearms that be brought inside the vehicle or building.
Correct.
No alcoholic beverages that be brought out of the building.
Correct.
A sound barrier curtain will be placed across.
Yes, sir, that's that tarp that, uh, I was talking about.
It's a Sunday, September twelfth through November twenty-first, one to five.
One to five, and then December nineteenth is Christmas shoot.
It's every Sunday?
It's every Sunday, yes, rain or shine.
Big fun, right?
It's, it helps out our club a lot, it really does. And it's good for the kids, too, we, we get a lot of kids down there that come in and enjoy shooting.
Based on the fact that they have a exemplary record, we're performing this, I make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
Hold a favor. Thank you.
Thank you, gents.
I give you your service.
Thank you.
Really haste to get to the turkey shoot. Fiber optic services. I can address that. Yeah, please. I had a call uh, last Friday from the town administrator in Wilberham saying that they were pursuing town-wide broadband and wanted to know if we wanted to be, work with them. Uh, I sent the Board of Selectmen plan that they've drawn up, and, uh, I guess the question is, do you want to work with them? Uh, also today, uh, at the end of our shared health services meeting, uh, we had a discussion about broadband, fiber optic broadband, uh, in the communities of our area. And there, there's a great deal of interest. I think it's, uh, the interest was sparked with, um, the new federal legislation, the ARPA legislation, which allows you to spend funds on broadband. Uh, also, the governor now has a new program as part of the Community Compact System where you can apply for a grant for broadband. I think I mentioned before that, uh, towns, particularly in Berkshire, but now coming across the river, and certainly in other parts of the state, are looking to install fiber optic broadband that would be available as an alternative for town residents. West Springfield has signed an agreement with, uh, Westfield Gas and Electric, uh, their subsidy, their subsidiary called Whip City Fiber, uh, to, to put, uh, fiber optic cable all over the town, make it available to the residents. Westfield, the city of Westfield, uh, now has about seventy percent of the town serviced by fiber optic broadband. And so, I think it's fair to say that we are exploring this. Craig's initiative, uh, and question would be, do we want to explore it cooperatively with other communities? On the discussion today, after the shared health service, Long Meadow was interested in having a, you know, a shared group that would meet regularly to discuss what they're doing and other aspects of, of, um, this new initiative. I think it's particularly important, um, not only as an alternative to cable system, but also for young people. I mean, a lot of young people are involved in work that they can do remotely. And undoubtedly, there'll be increased pressure, uh, for the town to provide fast internet service at a reasonable price. And so, it's, it's also, I think, a, a tool to retain young people and recruit young people into the community, as well as providing residents who would like to pick and choose what they, what services that, that they want, uh, to do so. I know that in larger communities, larger cities, there are now, uh, private companies that provide internet service only. You pay fifty bucks a month, I guess Verizon now is offering it for thirty-nine dollars a month. And, um, you get internet service, and then you pick a streaming service that you might want. Uh, everything from Major League Baseball to, um, YouTube, to Fubo, Hulu, all those services then, uh, are, are available, and you, you pick and choose whatever service you want at the price that you want. Who's in charge of Wilberham's M L P? Is there oversight? Their I T person, their I T person, yes. When I went on the phone call, it was Nick and their I T guys.
Is it still Nate?
Nate, yeah. And they just described what they were doing, they said they had heard that we have an interest, and they wanted to know, do you want to try and work cooperatively? I think it's important, really, uh, to share information. This is a big and complex undertaking, and rather than everybody invent the wheel, I think a vehicle to share service, to share information.
You think a lot of sense. Do you think with our fiber optic committee, we can schedule a meeting at a later date to have Wilberham?
Exactly.
The broadband.
Exactly.
Plan that they have to meet with our committee to see what they can see benefits for those kinds?
Way I ended the conversation, I said I would go to the selectmen to see if they're agreeable, uh, and then the next thing would be, we would schedule our fiber optic committee to meet with their I T people. So we could learn.
Sounds like a good idea.
So. Are people, we meet with their people?
Definitely, because you'll be a contact because their people are.
All right. So this is a, this is something we should pursue?
Yes.
Yes.
So we did the Turkey Show, Tree Warden, Gypsy Moth funding.
I did send uh.
This pains me.
The board, uh, the information I had from our tree warden. Uh, who's not available this week. But I did uh, check. To see if the tree services that we use were on the state bid list. That would enable uh, Dana simply to hire them without going through. A long and expensive and time consuming advertised bid process. The answer is yes. Both Linden and Northern and also Wallace are all. Part of the state bid process so that uh. We don't, wi- with this hundred thousand dollar contribution, uh, we're not required to do an advertised bid. We can continue doing what he was doing. And what what he did was basically say, I'm a little nervous since we have all this money. Whether or not the law is gonna require an advertised bid, so. And 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 the reason to have more than one firm is that these companies are working in many towns. And he can't get them for an extended period. They'll say, we'll come for a day or two, and then we have another commitment. And so what he tries to do. When he's uh, out there with the, trying to get the work done, is he'll hire one firm for a day or two, and then he'll hire another one. So that there's a continuing effort.
So what was the email you sent today? Well, prevailing wage, fifty two percent.
Yes, well, that's true.
What's true?
What what's true is that. And then they add to it fifty two percent, fifty two percent.
Do they, yes, if, of the bid process? Of the bid?
Yeah, right.
Or we can hire them without sending out to the bid process.
Right, right.
Without the advertised.
Because that's what we did with the first two hundred and fifty thousand.
That's right.
So however we do it, we're okay.
We're okay, we're legal. I mean, that's, that's, that's the bottom line is.
And I just don't know, I mean, I mean, I just don't know if he can get a tree service to commit to. Coming into a tree to work, because they got all these other towns.
That's right.
He can't.
The electric company. He can't, that's why he likes to have a couple different options.
With Northern, Linden and Wallace on the bid list, we just hire at will.
Yeah, Northern, I think, does a good part of the work.
Get them in here, work on shaping.
So we have a hundred and forty thousand dollars. And he said that uh, after he expensed this money, he thinks that this will clear away all of the problem trees.
I've heard that before.
Well, then we had another infestation, yes.
The odd thing is, seems like every storm, every storm, the trees that go down are not the ones. You'd hope the whole storm would help us out by knocking out a few of the tipsy ones, but no.
Forget it. Alright. Let the tree cutting begin. Let's see, Hampden Highway Department radios.
Uh, I had a visit from the highway superintendent. Uh, while back, saying that the new radio system. Does not include the highway department, even though that was originally promised. He then had a discussion with the. Dispatch superintendent and learned that radios are going to be provided to the. Wilberham DPW to the Hampden Highway Department. And be paid for out of a state grant. I think Tony is on this.
I didn't secure the grant yet.
Does he wanna? Tony, you wanna add to that?
Yep, I'm here, I'm gonna make sure you can hear me, I'm trying my new Bluetooth headset.
You may wanna change that.
Yeah. We could just update the board uh, about highway department CPW radios.
Okay, is this any better?
Yes, much better.
Alright, sorry about that. So I did speak with uh, Mark from the highway department. We did have a conversation about uh, radios. Apparently, the uh, radio system that they have now does not use a repeater. Uh, we're not able to communicate with them from our dispatch center to the highway units. Um, I did have a meeting with. Patients, they have um, a system called Team Connect. It uses push-to-talk devices that run off of. Cell towers. Um, if you wanna think about Nextel, that's kind of what the the technology is, but newer. Uh, these devices work anywhere in the United States where there are cell service, uh, some places, obviously, especially some parts of Hampden, there's a. Cell coverage issues, which there's not many, there's just a couple that were identified. Um, the units are being tested right now. Uh, they are, again, they are. Countrywide, they'll work anywhere in the country. Uh, I did speak with Goose Town. Um, we're gonna get a, a, an amount that. Each department handed and Wilberham need, and the grant that I secured should be able to pay for the uh. The lease of the radios until at least the end of this fiscal year and then possibly further. So I'm gonna look into uh, into that. So communications for highway is, it is part of public safety, it is. Necessary for us to be able to communicate with them rather than picking up a cellphone and and trying to call and tell them where the problem areas are. Especially during a storm, uh, during uh, the, what little hurricane that we had, we were ready with all the devices. Each community had their own devices in case. We had a emergency calls, we had a few, not too many. So these will add to the. Uh, response, the quick response of the highway department for both communities and will be paid for by the state grant. Uh, up until the end at least of this fiscal year.
How many units was that, Tony?
So right now Hampden is testing, I think, two mobiles and one handheld. Uh, they're gonna look for, I believe it was seventeen, um. Fourteen mobiles, I believe, and three handhelds, or somewhere around there. And I I believe Wilberham's a little bit more, they're about thirty or thirty-five units.
And Hampden will still use its VHF as a backup?
Yeah, they can have that as a backup, each. Yes, they can have that as a backup. Uh, each community will have their own, uh, it's called a talk group. So there'll be one talk group for Hampden, one talk group for Wilberham, and there will be a common talk group. So we, if there is a, an event where, say, we need, you know, thirty more units. The vendor will be able to to issue us thirty units for that event, and we can have another talk group, or we can just use the common talk group, but it's very flexible. Um, users can have an app on their phone instead of actually carrying another device. So if um. Mark wanted to have the app on his phone rather than carrying a device, he can do that as well. So it's, they're very flexible with what they will offer. Uh, us for that service.
Will that run Zello or is that something different?
It, it's kind of like Zello, uh, however, it's um, this is based off of Goose Town's technology. And they, they also provide GPS for the units as well. So if uh, highway has a GPS provider now, they can use the GPS off these units uh, instead. To save some money.
Alright, thanks Anthony.
Thanks Tony.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Shared health agent memorandum of understanding.
The board has approved this earlier, you haven't signed. So if you would sign one copy, the only change that has been made in version twelve. Is that uh, they, we've added a sentence which provides that when. Census data, the two twenty census data becomes available. It will be incorporated into the document. Right there you have the census data from two thousand and ten. Also, I should mention that they did make an offer. To a health agent. A good offer. And he turned it down. So they're back to square one, they're going to re-advertise and go through the process again.
And Laurie, Laurie is still working for DM.
Laurie's still working.
Population goes down, does that share go down?
Yeah.
Well, as long as the others don't.
Right, sure. But it'll be, yeah, modest, modest decrease in our here.
So we're signing this with a very.
The way it's going down, I was like, that takes separately, attach it to version thirteen, fourteen.
Thought we were on twenties by that.
Well, it has, it's it's taken quite a bit of time, but um. On the positive side.
Yes.
There aren't many communities in the Commonwealth that are able to put together. Uh, an agreement like this, a multi-town agreement like this, but not easy to do, so.
And it's for three years.
That's for three years, and Pioneer Valley Plan Commission really put it together for us.
We're not gonna pay anything for anybody.
No, three years. Uh, I'm not sure whether you. You wanna make a, a budget adjustment on that for the special town meeting or just allow those funds. Be there, and we would use them to continue paying our public health nurse or any other.
We don't know where they're gonna hire someone.
They're really modest.
Planning board resignations, filling the vacancies.
Well, this has uh, become very complicated. Uh, there are a number of requirements in the law that we have to abide by. One of them is that in order to fill the vacancy, a joint meeting of the board of selectmen. And the planning board is required. Uh, there is also a requirement that the planning board request a meeting with the selectmen. And that you have to wait a week before you can schedule that meeting. The planning board is going to meet on September the first, that'd be Wednesday. Uh, as I understand it, they have three items on their agenda. They will appoint or elect. A temporary or interim chair. Secondly, they will formally request of the board of selectmen. Uh, they have a meeting to to make appointments. As soon as that is done, an electronic copy will be sent to the selectmen. So I would anticipate that around six oh five, six ten on Wednesday night, you will receive a request to have a meeting. Now, the next meeting to the board of selectmen would be scheduled for the seventh of September, I've said, yeah, seventh of September, which would be. A Tuesday, because of Labor Day. The next meeting of uh, the planning board would be on the eighth. And. Uh, because there are two continued sessions. Uh, of the uh, petitions, the two petitions for uh, storage facilities. Uh, one has been, the Ju- July twenty eighth uh, hearing has been continued to September the eighth. There is a waiver of the sixty-five day rule. Uh, that was provided by the petitioner. But uh, September the eighth is the deadline for that, and also there's another waiver uh, to September the fifteenth for the second petition. In order to be able to meet and act uh, and conduct the hearing. Uh, four of the five members of the planning department are needed. If they were going to issue or deny a, issue a, a, a special permit, four votes would be required. And so before they can act, they need to have a complement, a full complement of members. And so, uh, this may change, but at, at, at present, having had a. Three or four discussions today with the planning board assistant. They're gonna schedule a meeting for the eighth. They will have, I think, at this point, there are three candidates to the planning board. They're gonna be interviewed on the first, and so on the eighth, they would like to meet with.
Who's in the interview?
The interviews at this point are gonna be conducted by the planning board on September the first.
I think the selectmen should interview with them.
I disagree.
Why?
It's their job, it's their.
No, it's not their job. It's the selectmen, it's the selectmen and the planning board's job to to pick the person. There's nothing in the bylaws, as I've been told five times. Former planning board members have told me, it's in the bylaws, it's not in the bylaws. And in the law says that the selectmen and the planning board uh, pick the candidate. So I would behoove us to interview the candidate rather than have just someone show up at our door, whose name we don't even know, or anything else. Secondly, all, all the other towns in the area do it that way.
All I'm saying is, rather than have a joint meeting, there's nothing that stops selection from attending the meeting on the first. I'm sure the planning board is gonna entertain. Anybody here have any questions for the candidates?
I suspect that won't happen, that's why. I suspect that won't happen.
Oh, I doubt that. Well, I think it's certainly, if the selectmen have an opportunity or have a concern, wanna talk to them.
What, what is the, what is the objection to all of us getting together and 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 uh. Interviewing the people at the same time? I mean, other, every other town does it that way. Long Meadows meeting in Ju- on September seventh to do the same thing, and meeting with their planning board. Deerfield just did it, and they gave each candidate, they gave each candidate the same question. Each candidate came in one at a time before the board and they answered the question. Uh, Plainville did it, the way Plainville does it is the board, the planning board, the selectmen sit together and then they take. They, you know, alternate, a planning board member asks a question, the selectman asks a question.
All I'm saying is going forward, are we gonna be doing this? Is your plan then for every board that has a vacancy, we're gonna sit down with those elected boards and interview them? At the same time?
Sure.
When Park has that big, which we haven't done in the past?
We haven't done the best.
When the assessors have vacancy, we haven't done that in the past. It was never concerned expressed by this board. That we should insert ourselves into their process.
I know, but it's not their process, it's our process. The law says the selectmen and the planning board shall meet and appoint a candidate. So it's our process, not their process.
Shall meet and appoint the candidate, the board, the planning board, actually, any elected board shall have, schedule a joint meeting. And present their recommendations for the.
Well, I backtrack for one second.
But I think we're really nitpicking here. I I agree that, you know, we should have a chance to present our concerns. And I would encourage our board to meet on the first, even if we ask them less citizens.
There's three candidates they've set for.
Two positions.
For two positions. Are they gonna narrow it, would, would they theoretically narrow it down at their first September meeting to two? Or would they present all three to us on the eighth?
Typically, that's what happens and they bring.
Except the problem with the first meeting on the first is, we've posted that the candidate seven to the seventh will submit their.
We posted or they posted?
They posted.
And if you look at what happened last year, and again, the board didn't have an issue last year when there was a vacancy, they interviewed three candidates.
No, and last year we didn't have an issue.
Yeah, obviously, it's all colored by, you know, I understand.
Because I haven't, I didn't think about it a lot, but, but here we have two people who served on the board. For a number of years, insert honorably, and 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 did a great job for the town, who chose to resign. In the, in the midst of one of the most important planning board decisions our town's gonna see for the next twenty years. It's gonna affect the whole town. So I think we've got a different, we're in a different place now with this particular vacancy.
Well, again, I think a simple solution is to.
And again, I hear that they're doing it on September first with three candidates, but we've posted all over everywhere that September seventh is the deadline. And I know there's other people who are interested. Now, whether they submit their names, it doesn't matter, yes.
September first isn't just deciding vote, it's just get and get, get candidates in front of you, interview and take a look at their resume. Posting's still gonna be open until September seventh.
Yeah, but you, but I was just told that on September eighth, we're gonna get together, pick the person. So if someone comes in at five o'clock and puts their resume at September seventh.
Right, but we have to request, we have to have a meeting to request a meeting from you guys, and then it has to wait.
Yeah, okay, so it's September eighth.
So if we wait until September eighth and request a meeting with you guys, now we're gonna interview however many people come in.
The variance is gone.
The longer this process takes to get somebody in there. The worse off the town's gonna be.
Whose fault is that? Whose fault is that?
I'm not sure. If you really wanna get into this, I have a problem keeping a filter sometimes, I'll probably give you my opinion.
Please give me your opinion.
Opinion is, as a, as a select board member, when I was in another town, I did not intervene, I did not go. To the, the, the planning board and and I would speak to them, but I wouldn't go publicly and and.
The what?
And and. And, and fan the flames of fear.
What did I say?
You published a letter to the editor.
Yes, I did.
With information that was not accurate. By the time that letter got posted.
Excuse me, that wasn't a, that wasn't a letter to the editor. That was requested by, by the, the uh newspaper gentleman. What recommendation do we make to the planning board, and those were the recommendations made. Now, the answer would have been, thank you for your recommendation, as required by law, we'll take it under consideration. Instead, it was we quit.
I didn't quit.
No, I know you did, I know you did, and I'm.
I'm still trying to do my job.
And you are, and, and I appreciate you being here to answer this. But if you're gonna tell me that the law says that the selectmen can make a recommendation, they have thirty-five days to do that. We did that, I sent two letters to the planning board asking them for a flexibility, because we wanted to hear the hearing first. I got no response to either one of them. We, we, we met as a board, we wrote our recommendations out, did we not? We voted on it. I've sent it to the, the planning board.
But you attended the hearing first.
Yeah.
And so you, you knew that a lot of the information that was in that letter was outdated. Because you attended the hearing, you know that there's a stormwater, there was a stormwater permit, uh, a stormwater plan that was.
Was there a stormwater plan?
It's available in the, in the planning board. It's, it's available, it, it's, it's part of the, kind of process.
So, okay, so the recommend, so you're telling me that the information I gave was wrong? It was a recommendation, it was a recommendation by our board to them, you could have simply said, or that you, but the, the board could have simply said. Thank you for your recommendation, we're taking care of it.
I don't disagree.
In a start, and the reporter, Mr. Zabrowski, asked if I could have a copy of the recommendation I gave it.
I don't disagree with you, that the reaction. Uh, for this whole hearing surprised me just as much as it surprised everybody else. Personally, I'm not looking forward to the next couple of months.
Well, it's gonna be difficult, that's a tough decision, it's a real tough decision.
So, it, you know. I, I don't know what else to say other than.
But I'm not gonna give up, I'm not gonna give up, I'm not gonna give up our responsibility, I'm not gonna give up, I'm not gonna give up our responsibility. As a board of selectmen to make recommendations, whether they're good recommendations or bad recommendations, because I might.
What if that recommendation delays the project enough that the applicant is granted his permit however he wants?
How is that recommendation gonna delay it, you just told me.
You're, you're, I'm talking about you're, you're wanting to be heavily involved in, in, in the act.
The law says we have to pick the applicant, you got, we have three votes. So you're saying we should just, we should, we, you, we should interview the person, we should just say, oh, okay, thank you very much?
The way I understand is, they're getting together on the first, they're gonna pick a chair. Then they're gonna have their candidates come in, they're gonna present the candidates, all of them, not just two. All the candidates of the board of selectmen on the eighth, at which point we interview and pick with them the best two candidates, right?
No, no.
How is that, how is that not, no, is that the way?
We would make a recommendation, the board of select.
They were gonna tell us the two candidates we're gonna vote for.
It's just like hiring, it's just like hiring.
Well, if it's a joint appointing, then why are they giving recommendations, should we all vote as a, of the two bodies together?
Exactly.
We, we have to, by law.
Any, any elected board typically meets with the selectmen, parks, library, whatever. And that board would typically interview, interview interested people. Bring forth their board's recommendation to a joint meeting with the selectmen. Now, I'm saying, if I can paraphrase, you'd like to be a little more intimately involved in the interview process.
We'd like to see all of them, they have five people.
And I said before, right, those meetings are open.
Is that what's gonna happen now?
Why wouldn't, why wouldn't uh somebody from the board of selectmen just show up to ask questions of the applicants? When you have our meeting on the first.
Too late to post, by the way.
Right.
Well, definitely.
But you could have, you could have not, or you could have one member.
Well, you can also be citizen, I'm not asking a selectman, as a person who lives on North Road, how do you feel about solar farms or whatever? Not as a member of the board, you may entertain questions from the audience, you don't know.
I, I honestly, because I haven't talked to anybody, I'm just, I, I feel like.
It is a bit uncharmed, a bit uncharmed.
I feel like there's tension going on between both boards, and I do not want there to be tension.
E- excuse me, Mr. Chairin, this is Nancy Zebra. Um, the way the camera is situated, the microphone is in front of whomever is speaking, could you please identify him?
Oh, it's Jason Barasso.
I'm actually, uh, Jason Barasso.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I just offer one, a point here, the critical issue is that sixty-five days expires, as I understand it, on September the second. We have a waiver from the petitioner to uh continue the meeting until the eighth of September. Action must be taken on the eighth. Or else this petition can be constructively granted. So we need a functioning planning board. Uh, and however we get the other two members, we need the two members, there's already been one hearing. And so those, after the appointment. I, I would have to think that the two new appointees are going to have to take some time and review the first hearing. Under the Mullen Rule, and get up to speed.
Or they can't vote.
What?
They'd have to, or they'd.
They have to. Uh, and they can't, by the way, we can't have two hearings without them, because they were another pickle. Uh, so they will have to be appointed, then they'll have to, I, I guess, just everybody sit tight while they review either the minutes. Or the video of that first July twenty-eighth meeting, and then convene the hearing. And if the petitioner is willing to sign another waiver to another date, that'd be fine. If the petitioner says to the planning board, let me withdraw without a prejudice, and you vote that, that'd be fine. But if the petitioner says no to both, the planning board has to make a decision on the eighth, otherwise it's constructively granted.
Don't we get ninety days from the time of the hearing?
From, it's, it's a total of ninety days, I believe.
I think it's another day from the time of the hearing.
Well, you have to, you know, when they, from when the hearing closes.
Date of the hearing, right.
So the clock runs again, yes.
So the hearing's been opened on July twenty eighth.
Right.
And ninety days from that would be.
But no, you have to get, you have sixty-five days to complete the hearing.
To hold the hearing.
To hold and complete it, yes. And then you have until the ninetieth day, or maybe, maybe, I'm not clear, maybe you have either to the ninetieth day or another ninety days.
I know, I know what you're talking, sixty-five days to actually start the process.
And then from the date of the hearing, then you have ninety days to make the decision.
Right, right.
And it wouldn't make sense to have the ninety, like, the sixty-five, why would you have ninety? Right.
So I think it's sixty-five days to have a hearing.
I guess the point I'm trying to make is that we need, we need one member, else we don't have a function. So it's like, in my mind, that's, that's the first urgent.
But action must be taken the night of the eighth.
We're not in this position to discuss this.
Action must be taken the night of the eighth, though.
Why?
Because the, the agreement to continue the hearing expires on the eighth. Unless Joanne can get them to sign another waiver. Yeah, if he, if he, the petitioner agrees to a wave uh for another hearing for a later date, fine. We don't know that they're willing to do that, I think Joanne's gonna uh pursue that.
What's the, what's the, on the other one, the timeline, the fifteen?
The other one, they haven't started the hearing yet.
But we do have sixty-five days.
The hearing was opened on, on, I think it's August the eleventh, but they didn't have a hearing, didn't have a session.
So we got ninety days from the eleventh.
August twenty seventh.
Ninety days from the eleventh.
So you'd have to be ready on that one to sit.
Mary Ellen, you want to say something?
Well, you're gonna do what you're comfortable doing, but I always come down on the side of more transparency as well. And I think that if the both boards participating in the discussion allows the public to think that it's a well-vetted issue. That everybody has had their say, that there are no questions remaining, and then takes a position, that's all. Just, I think greater transparency is always better.
Kind of like what Rob was saying earlier, I thought the both boards would get together. And as a collective body vote, correct?
Alright, oh yes, correct, that's true.
That's right, yeah.
True of everyone.
But we're talking about, yep, until the two people were gonna vote.
Right, and I was under the impression that all of them would be coming to you, is that not, not correct?
No.
Only two, you.
I don't know.
They're recommended, they're recommended.
They're recommended to Madison.
Right, when Madison was, like, the only one candidate.
When, when I was appointing, I was the only applicant, so I don't know.
Right, they're back with Madison, they're the three original, then you brought two to another meeting in October, and then presented Madison, you go in and present Madison to our joint.
But without bringing all of them, you really don't have a choice. They only bring two, the choice is made.
I understand that, but we are, but there's no issue with us attending their interview as well and listening to their dialogue and being participative.
I would, they can't post a meeting, but I would, there's nothing against a liaison having questions to.
On the eighth or the first?
On the first. Go from the first, or?
That's tomorrow, or next day. But if, if two selectmen go.
You gotta call them, then you gotta worry about deliberation.
Bring us a question, I ask a question, is that not deliberation?
How is that different than us attending the hearings for the storage and where all three of us were there? And we ask questions as citizens in town.
Because we didn't have a vote on the decision. That's what we do.
What's the time for posting?
Well, we don't have time to post for Wednesday. They're gonna, actually, I, I assume they're gonna be interviewing candidates. Week from now. I mean, two, two days from now, I'm sorry. We can do that. Can adjourn our meeting, sure, you can adjourn the meeting as long as you set, as long as you set a time and a date.
Right. So we're not being concerned about posting, after we've done the executive session, instead of now return, return open session to adjourn our meeting to six o'clock.
Whatever way you wanna do it, uh, it's legal.
I think that works.
Yeah, Jason, in your opinion, do you have a problem with the board coming and asking questions of any person? Okay, great, good.
I, I don't wanna speak to the board, but I can't see why anybody. I don't know why anybody.
Actually, if you adjourn the meeting, Don, uh, once they vote at six oh five, it communicates directly to the board of selectmen that they wanna meet with. So they don't need to send it, so, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, then you're back into your question, and think back to Don's question about the seventh.
I've got, because we've advertised with the seventh, so what if, what if, uh. What if, you know, super planner shows up?
Well, I, my understanding, I just talked to Julian briefly for the day, but my understanding is that we're still gonna take. Applications after the first, we're just gonna do these three because they're already here, and, you know what I mean? And then we'd have another, if, if the super planner did show up with a resume, we'd still.
If the selectmen can, if the selectmen convene on the eighth, and there are two or three other candidates.
Both boards can do, and you can post it for that meeting too.
They would have, if they made, there would be.
Right. Right, they can, they could take that meeting too.
Alright, we got a, we got a plan. So, Sarah?
I was leaving a flag.
I'm moving over from Jay over from here.
Don't do that, don't do that in an auction, fifty thousand. Uh, alright, that's our plan.
So quickly.
Thank, thank you, Jason.
Hearing me out. I was here for the board of assessors.
On the other thing, you really haven't had any real discussion then on the other here. Cause you opened and closed.
No, 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 it was, it was, we haven't had, yeah, on the two summer one, that's.
Yeah, you haven't done anything.
Sixteen, sixteen. No, sixteen summers is the one on East Summer Road.
Okay.
Two Summers Road is the one, um, Summers Road, yes.
One road.
Yes.
So. Now we have planning board case twenty twenty-one C recommendations, there we.
And my understanding is, we have the same recommendations we had on. I mean, they're adjacent to each other, they would have the same concern.
There's additional.
Additional, additional.
There's additional recommendations.
Cause of the water district.
Because we have time, we can wait, we can postpone those recommendations.
Why does it exist to both persons?
Correct, no, no, there were some historic concerns and set of that concerns I saw on the second.
This is for the first.
Second.
Section, second, yeah. I was gonna say, it was for the first one, please, no.
Alright, you're here for the board of assessors. Well, oh, oh, yeah, it's right on the, keep a seat.
Sorry, Jason.
Fire station expansion.
One issue for us here is the, Pam has been working on the tour of other stations in the area.
We're gonna tour other stations. East Long Metal Thursday at ten AM.
Uh, I got responses from the chief, so what we have in front of you is the latest information I have from them.
Okay, then Wilbraham eleven on September third, everybody can do that?
Yeah, Thursday, Friday.
Yeah. Will we meet there, or we go, or we take the, we take the selectmen, when there's a, if there's a driver?
Now, do we need to?
We take a fire.
Do we need to post to this or no?
It's a tour.
I don't think we have, there's no deliberation, don't go right there. Uh, just to throw out there, there's very chance, the East Long Metal one, can that be the afternoon or we like in the afternoon?
All I can do is ask, John.
If not, I can make something change.
What, what time, I, we.
I could do one, but I have a dinner party.
One, okay, if you guys change it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Fire march is open.
Yeah. If you can change it. It's Thursday, okay, uh.
Before we go into that, is our fire chief coming with us too on these tours?
Get a job. Works for it.
It's a, it's up to you, I mean, Wilbraham, Pat would probably be there, anyhow, he's on a schedule out there, right?
Yeah, it works out to sporadic schedule, I'm not sure.
If we can, that'd be good.
Yeah. Right.
Put him in the loop.
Or, or Pat's, if Pat's scheduled on Friday.
I mean, when I went through the emails, I sent it to Ed as well to say what works for all of you, so. I'll send you an email at the final times.
So, I wanna ask you about, this will make a conjunction with the tour, it'll be helpful. Right now, where the, the equipment, right, fire, you get an alarm, your equipment is all hung up on the wall there?
Yeah.
Does the, are, are the uh qualifying equipment there too? You know, if someone's coming from their house?
Yes, everybody's equipment there is there, um, on the wall next to the fire.
And, and how much space, you know, you know, they always talk about the firematic stuff, how, how much space do you need for that? I mean, it's too short there, but one of the, one of the criticisms, or the criticism, or one of the observations in the uh. Report was that there's not enough space in between for people to, you know, get their equipment on properly, and stages where the trucks are moving out and stuff like that.
Usually, there is a turnout room or bunker room where people get the turnout gear on, that's the equipment you're referring to, is turnout gear. It's a separate area away from the vehicles, and when they're pulling out, it's less dangerous, for obvious reasons. Um, you know, someone will say, oh, you know, watch your back, or wait for people to get in, or anybody in, does anybody see anybody around, save the, you know, that kind of thing. Uh, that's, that's what we do now.
We don't have that, we don't have a turnout.
We do not, yeah.
And all the equipment's stored in the. Then what happens when you come back from a fire, you wash it all down?
Well, depending on what kind of fire, if it's structural fire, we, where we encounter, you know, smoke or something, it will. It will get washed, um, over a period of time. We can't wash everyone's, you know, turnout gear at once. Um, so, yeah, it gets pretty much hung back up in the spot and then gets worked through the washer. Well, we do try decon as much as possible on the scene. You know, spray it out, we have brushes, buckets, whatever, uh, scope down the SCBA pack before you get back in the truck. It starts at the scene, decon starts at the scene, um, because we don't want to put that, anything. In the cavity vehicle as well, cause then we just, you know, maybe spreading it around everywhere.
What, what can you fit in that machine now? Just one uniform to clean?
Or pretty much one says two, but one is safe.
And the decontaminator, that's sep- is that separate now? That's on, you know, that's on another building, right? I mean, that's a.
Our washer?
Yeah.
Our washer is, um, last year we had a grant from the state, five thousand dollars. If you can buy an extractor, called extractor, it's a heavy duty, um, clothes machine washer, basically. Um, we installed that ourselves, we cut off hole into, uh, women's restrooms. Slid it in there, stacked the hot, the hot water heater above it, we had a couple of floor up to get the drain engine. Um, Claude isn't helping us out a little bit there, we have a plumber on, on the station. We had some people involved to do, you know, construction, cutting, block and stuff, electrician, whatever. So we, we pretty much put it at no cost.
Is, is that the most efficacious use in place of it?
There was nowhere else for it to go. We're, you, you're, you have to go to the water, you have to go to the drains. They're underground or in concrete. Um, yeah, we'd love to have it in the back bay somewhere, but it just wasn't feasible to run drain ones.
And the electrical work is pretty much all set?
Yep, the majority of the electrical work, any, you know, services new. The generator conductors were, um, replaced, um, conduit that's large enough. And the, um, transfer switch was upgraded as well, uh, disconnect for the generators installed too.
That was the question they had about the team, they were asking, uh, chief, is the generator properly sized for the operation of the app? That's a, a, an item that actually is checking with Bob, something that would be reimbursable through the CARES Act. So perhaps this is an opportunity that if the fire department has that kind of need, should be addressed now. And of course, the generator is a fairly portable item. No matter what the board did in the future, it will be something that will be adequate going forward. And so I asked the chief what his thoughts were on that.
Well, I mean, obviously, we need new generator. You know, every time a generator, maybe this person comes out, we need to replace it, so I guess.
Are you looking at sixty, seventy thousand dollars?
I don't, I have not gotten any votes.
Okay, so, I mean, if that's something, and Bob did concur that it is, I think it's more best than the chief or something. I'd rate bring back to us.
How big's a generator now? Do you know the power output?
It's a thirty KW right now, puts out roughly ninety watts, you know, at two hundred ampere service.
Yeah, but small.
It's small, I mean, large scale operation, if we were into a major storm or something, where we're there for several days, you know. We're exercising it probably on this, this like.
Even, even one deep snap by pushing it?
Yeah, well, I mean, sometimes it doesn't start, you know, we have to repair it right away. We have ports on that. The, the fire service, we are, we're always able to overcome and adapt any situation. We'll get the doors open, get the trucks out one way or the other. We'll get back and, you know, and we'll go find someone to repair it.
Well, the board feel right with asking the chief.
Those, those doors, they're, can you open by hand?
You, you can, yeah.
Look at three people.
Misability retirements.
Uh, just, we, not necessarily repair, some of the buttons wear out on the door openers, but every. Year or so, we do have to have someone come to adjust them to keep them fine, so we'll.
So, I guess that's, that's all the questions I have on this part, so we'll do our tour this week, you can join us, please go.
Ed, I know you have a job and stuff like that, is it more convenient for you, Red, to have this tour later in the day so you can meet us after you?
Oh, yeah, later in the afternoon, early afternoon, whatever works, whatever works for people, I'll, I'll make it there. Figure it out. It's, it's, if it works, if she's got it set, um, we'll.
Strategic planning team, Hampton, New Hampshire.
You have the letter from the superintendent to chairman. Seems to be, you know, September the twenty ninth, five o'clock, they would like a representative from town of Hampton. Select work.
So. With the board's approval, I mean, I feel like I have a vested interest in the school system. I would love to be the representative from the select board. I'm not worried about mine.
And what, what is the vested interest?
I mean, I got three and eight year old going to school starting from, so, I'm pretty sure my interests are my youth. Which I'm slowly losing.
And a couple of the key members. Kind of talked to me about losing your youth. And we could ask advisory for recommendations, just ask if we have any other key leaders.
They're asking for, the, the letter as asked, for the purpose of this communication is to ask for your assistance in selecting a member or designated. Hand of board selectmen, the part of strategic planning team, and to identify two to three additional key leaders. Such as advisory board member or representative of town departments such as police, recreation, or library. Would be interested in serving.
Yeah, I think library, if it's not the one.
And they're going to, these, they're gonna meet, uh, the first meeting is the twenty ninth, they get organized. And what basically, I guess, they, they, uh, gonna do is they'll meet by monthly basis. Uh, and they'll be looking at all the information that they gather from surveys and forums and. So we want to look at libraries.
I think throw it out there, certainly don't ask the planning board, they're out of members, so. Yeah, right, but I'm willing to, I'd like to, frankly, our rep.
Oh, second. I'll accept that.
And reach out to, uh, favor, I, maybe you have asked Bob to reach out to advisory and let them sort them on their members.
Advisory and library.
Yeah, I think what, I think what their plan initially is to have this like. One of the steering committee group, lack of a better word, and then there'll be subcommittees and different things, right? And, uh, I believe, I believe we have an agreement that fifty percent of the members will be the chairman.
Unless there's somebody from the C O A who'd like to be on it.
I get messages to the other boards and, uh, we can have a response for the next, uh, meeting.
Covid nineteen mask policy.
I had a conversation with Sheila today. At this point, she's not recommending any change in our policy here. Obviously, if her in Long Meadow and East Long Meadow have done something. But, uh, her analysis of what we're seeing in Hampton and Wilbraham does not lead her to the field that the numbers are at that point. Or we need to change the mask policy.
Luckily, having in the school.
They're, they're under, you know, they're hearing from, just seeing people like that. If you're asking for the opinion from municipal buildings at this point, it's not concerned.
It's funny you mentioned schools, and the governor's press conference today, the secretary of education even stated that. Covid transmission within schools is very rare, so.
Where's it coming from?
It's coming from.
Yeah.
It's, it's just a buyer's on its way out.
And Hampton, um, Hampton had the second highest positivity rate in the immediate area.
Yeah, but if, when you start to show, that was basically a family went to a, an event and they all came back.
Yeah.
If you take them out of the equation, because we're such a small pop- population, it really skewed our number, so.
Yeah, six percent, and I think Munson was in the sevens. And then everyone else, but Long Meadow was, uh, not under two percent.
It's small, like you saying, though, our population is so small, if you look at the numbers of testing, Hampton's population is very slow in that list of testing. So the numbers are going to be skewed differently.
I'll just throw it out there, no, Becky, in your opinion, Becky, what do you think, masking policy?
Um, you know, we currently recommend a mask for anyone.
Right.
Um, vaccinated or unvaccinated, we don't have a lot of people who are masking right now. My only concern is that we do have people that come in from other communities. So, you know, when you're looking just at Hampton, I, you know, I understand that you're looking just at that bubble, but, you know. People go to different places and then bring it back, so, you know, that's the only concern, you can certainly follow whatever mandate you put into place.
At this point, I think keeping the, uh, basically strongly encouraged. At this point, reevaluate on a weekly basis.
September eleventh, remember?
Um, so I think the fire department is planning to do something, they have the state fire marshal's guidance that they have to follow. Just got the orders here today. So at nine fifty-five, and they have to do, uh, the apparatus rollout at ten o'clock, they're gonna do a presentation. With ceremony involving, um, followed by prayers, so I think Megan's working on that right now in our fire department.
The, if there's a scheduled public forum for the ARPA funds. Uh, I, I, I like the whole one of those forums that we do on this, we have a lot of money coming into town and maybe there's some other ideas out there for people. I mean, you know, we gotta do water project, you know, broadband.
So, special meeting, special session.
Special session, get input, you know.
Selectment and then put it out to the, the public to attend and offer ideas.
Where? So, yeah, Pam, check, I mean, they're back, they're doing something there, so they're courting it with, with the back, so it's starting. Nonsense, or cleaning and stuff like that.
The.
I'd say Thursday's kind of like our least used mistletoe.
There's a, there, there are specific regulations from the treasury, but I keep hearing that they're very flexible. That you can spend the money in a variety of ways and they apparently are approving, so.
What were you thinking for a date, like September?
Oh, do, I, we skipped over the pandemic premium proposal. That's mine, uh, pandemic premium proposal. Uh, we got a, many additional proposal, uh, revision proposal. Uh, some folks have sent us some information, other people, they think should qualify. ARPA is pretty, that's got some regulations about who can qualify now, but not only that. The governor's supplemental budget has, also has money for essential workers. So, I think we should just put out of the poll for now, see what the governor's gonna do. Pam, you spoke to.
We did, we did get a response, Pam had sent out a message to, uh, send her lesser results, right? And we got a response that, uh, nothing at this point, they can't tell us anything at this point, but the governor is. Involved, it has proposed an initiative, uh, for first responders, so.
So, we'll just hold off on our, while they see what they do on the Wednesday, because they're gonna give money for the state, they're gonna keep our money for something.
Sure.
But we have all the people's information.
We're gonna need some help to find.
Well, I think looking at the list, I think, like you said, you've heard some feedback.
Senior center people, library people. Uh, free cash reduction of the state.
So you have, uh, the most recent version of that prepared at the police department. By Kathy Zanetti. We still have some work to do, maybe on, uh, the Quinn amount. But, uh, I don't expect a lot of adjustment there. I think the good news is that, uh, the savings, largely because of the decision on dispatch. It looks like the savings, even after the additional expenses are added in for. Uh, clerks and so forth at the police department, is two hundred sixteen thousand one hundred point three dollars.
Got some concerns about some of these numbers, Bob, especially after our discussions in the past couple of weeks. New cruiser, I believe we heard from Chief Drumbley that forty-five thousand was not enough for a completely equipped food line cruiser. Craig, remember that?
Yeah.
So. That appropriation, I think, needs to be looked at in the, uh, in the fall, especially if he's looking to add another one. Perhaps additional money needs to be put into the supplemental cruiser number to make up for the shortfall here. I'm concerned about also the drop in training. Hard to believe that losing dispatch people would affect training money that much.
That's what I was told in a conversation today by the chief.
Are they getting money from these reformers for training?
I, I don't know, fifteen, twenty percent of the training money is for the dispatch people, it just seems. Maybe we're focusing on the wrong kind of training or something. Or unless it's tabletop exercise that involves dispatch, and if that's the case, are we doing those tabletop exercises? But, uh, that'd be a question for the chief, are we doing tabletops with Wilbraham dispatches going forward? Cause that was something I was comp, I was accustomed to happening with the schools and with the, and the fire department. So I'd like some answers on that part.
Now, are we going to, are you gonna go to the town meeting and, uh, suggest those numbers, special funding?
That's, that's another concern I have, as since we're in the middle of contract, we actually don't know what line two is gonna change to. You could say, look, we'll just go ahead and leave it like this, and excess money, whatever turns out to be fall for free cash next year. Or you could say, fine, we're gonna knock it down by someone, leaving some flexibility in there for us to make adjustments in the contract. Which I think is probably a good model, but don't take the entire thing out, this will have no money for contract adjustment.
Well, yeah, true, but we, unless we take some of this money out, it goes into the tax rate, so, in December. And we probably need to.
But we have to be careful to leave so much in, like, oh, hey, look, a hundred thousand, must be giving huge raises, so you don't want to. I think there is a number there, I think, Don, you had a conversation, I think, about having, I know that the treasurer has come forth with a proposal for. Uh, some prepayment for the special time meeting. I think with, like you said, with our free cash number, get the financial team together for upcoming meetings. Look at what we do. Well, I think he's on it right now.
Oh, there he is.
Cliff, how are you?
He, uh. He's muted. And, um, we were concerned because of the fall that he has taken, so.
So I don't think there's an opportunity, obviously, for something, I mean, I know that, uh, Jason's here, the assessors have a meeting plan in the near future. And just start the work based on what are we looking at for the tax rate, sorry, put those numbers.
We are.
Okay.
I had a brief conversation with Kelly today, very, very.
Right, so.
It's still very early. If I figure out, we do have our next meeting tomorrow. So I'll bring it up again and see what we need to expect.
It did unmute.
How you doing?
Awful. Horrible. Uh, supposed to try to go home tomorrow, but we'll see how this works out, so. Um, you had a question for me, I'm sorry?
No, just that, uh, we're gonna plan on having a, a little joint financial team meeting in the near future.
Well, we usually do that, it's a good idea, and, um, I think Dick is right on to get rid of that debt. We, we did, we did a hundred ninety-two thousand last year, so it'll be a good idea to get that debt totally gone. Uh, it puts a minor debt in the overall number. And the next question would be, if we don't use any of it this year, how do we approach reducing the tax rate with it, if that's what the board decides? Or do we let the free cash completely roll over? Do we put some in stabilization, which I know Richard would like, or do we just let it sit there until the spring town meeting? Um, we, we have not done that in the past, usually we, we designate something with the total amount in the fall town meeting. Um, I'm not aware of any other things that you have on your docket that, um, you're looking to pay out other than the debt. Which I think is three hundred and fifty-four thousand, I think.
Yeah, we have a request for a truck from highway department and potentially some minor salary adjustments, but, my quick glance would be maybe eighty, ninety thousand, I think Dick was looking for three hundred plus.
Three fifty-four, yeah.
So I mean, if you took that together, you'd still have, gosh, and then you take the potential savings from police, you still have seven hundred thousand dollars to decide what you're gonna do.
Right, I think.
Stabilization, you put something against the tag, that's why I'm suggesting to the board, and like you said, we've done in the past, let's get the, uh, the minds together and come up with a good plan. We have a month and a half to go.
Yeah. We, we are in enviable condition to do some of the things we need to do. And, um, uh, it's very, you know, it's very, it's worked out very well. What I hesitate in to, not to bring up, I should say it, is that, um, this was a strange year, and a lot of things fell into place to generate this kind of free cash. So I wouldn't want to start thinking that, oh, well, we'll have another chunk of money next year. Uh, we will have some free cash next year, we usually budget that way so that we have some. But this, there was, be glad to go over it sometime with the perfect storm that we had with several accounts. Um, that helped generate this kind of free cash, so be happy to come in and sit down with those numbers. Uh, I'll be going over them with the advisory board as well. Um, hopefully, I'll be able to get home soon. Um, that's a project. So, I'm, I'm not kidding you, it's, I was in hospital yesterday, so I'm out now. But fortunately, we're in a good, I'm in a good spot here with family, so I'm not running up hotel bills or something like that, you know. So, so we, I agree, getting the advisory board and Richard and myself and Eva maybe, and any of the assessors that are interested. Um, usually to come away with some pretty good ideas on how to do things, but I think the key has come from the select, select board. What do you have on your agenda that you would expect us to pay for? Uh, if not, hey, that's fine, you know, we'll go, we'll move on from there. You gotta know, we have to have a general idea of what you folks would like to have on the warrant to pay for it. And if I'm repeating myself, blame it on the medication. Uh, so. Thank you, I'm gonna unmute, okay? Yeah, mute me up, Bob, okay?
Okay.
Yeah, you don't wanna hear this groaning.
We're muted.
So, um.
Thirteenth for joint, uh, advisory. Oh, you know, I'm also, but does this take into account the money that we would save in retirement and then, uh?
No. Those numbers are available from the president. Uh, I did ask him about that.
Well, I think you had those before, we were talking about the four hundred dollar projected, four hundred thousand projected saving, you had those separate numbers. You know, so I think you have a PowerPoint. Yeah, so it's up there.
So it's another.
That potentially adjustments.
So there's more savings, yeah.
Because, because, well, if you took, if you take the, just as an example, if you take the just two hundred thousand, let's say, for general salaries. And, uh, the treasurer's always said the benefits and that are about thirty-one percent.
Sure. But two of the, two of the former dispatchers remain with the town and continue their health insurance, so that's not gonna be a savings. And presumably, there'll be a reduction, there'll be a reduction in the, uh, retirement contribution, but.
Right.
They would also be making a retirement contribution, so they're twenty hours.
There'll be some, there'll be some, somewhere there. Uh, assessors. Assessors.
Didn't even change shirts.
So I, I'm actually, uh, here, yeah, with assessors. Uh, Norm couldn't make it to the primary, I understand that there's been some discussion about, uh, a small handful of folks, uh, in town hall who didn't quite fit, uh, within the, uh, didn't quite get an adjustment from the salary study or compensation study. Yes, that's what, thank very much. Um, so I, I went over this briefly with, um, with Norm, but we feel that the principal assessor is, uh, barely under eight, or didn't really, uh, take into account a lot of what she brings to the table.
Excuse me, Jason, could you speak it, speak up a little?
Yep, yep, so we feel the principal assessor position wasn't accurately depicted in the Collins report. She brought a lot of, uh, few of the notes, she brought a lot of experience with her that wasn't considered for the job description. So she's principal assessor, she's got her, her MAA certification. She was a real estate agent for four and a half years, before that, she was an office hand for five years. Um, and where they placed her, I guess some of the positions that they were comparing her to weren't equivalent positions. Um, so we felt that the numbers that came out of her work were skewed or biased low. Uh, some of the, some of the issues we saw was the, your work didn't accurately reflect the pay in Justin towns. Um, so for example, in Palmer, uh, they took the Palmer salary, the actual assessor position Palmer, divided it by forty hours and then broke that out and brought it down to an hour wage. But Palmer assessor is actually a thirty-two and a half hour position, a forty hour position. So they reported it at, at thirty twenty-nine and it's actually thirty-seven twenty-eight. Um, then there was, uh, assessor in Springfield, which isn't even certified assessor. Uh, they use that as, as a high end, so we feel, um, and Kelly McCormick and, and Norm have, have emailed these issues over, so I don't wanna go through all of that, but, uh, basically when you add in, uh, also the, the ag one number, ag one hourly rate was erroneously represented in that report as well. Uh, ag one rates fifty-three dollars, maybe that sense of hour. Uh, so once you start adding in stuff that was left out, uh, you end up with an hourly range. The, end up with an hourly range between thirty-three fifty and thirty-nine forty-three. Um, and we would, we were hopeful that the select board would reconsider, uh, where she is, uh, pay wise. The other thing, she doesn't exactly fit into that pay scale step and rating, please. Uh, so we're hoping the select board will take a look at the information we submitted, uh, previously and place her at a grade. It's grades, it's stepping, statements. Should place this step three, grade six. We're hoping she'd be placed at a grade six, step eight, which would put her at, uh, thirty-six forty-nine, which is actually right in the, of the range.
So steps, steps which are typically more indicative of experience and et cetera. So you're saying her experience factor leads to higher, the grade is correct, but the step backer should take more account of her experience.
That, I believe that's what, yeah, I believe that's what we're trying to say.
You have no problems with that?
I got up to speed on this like four hours ago. But I think currently she's at a step six if you follow the.
Yeah, she's six, so.
Grade six, steps of six. Step six, yeah. Yeah, or step six. Yeah, they don't fit exactly in that scale well. And we, uh, calculated that would result in annual increase of twenty-three hundred seventy-two dollars and sixty-four cents. So I feel it's a fairly modest request. She wasn't a assessor before something. She was here that she went over to Munson. She was an assistant. She was an assistant here, right? She was an assistant here, like the Munson, got her certification while she was at Munson, and then came back here as a principal assessor. How long she in Munson? Three years, three is my guess.
Okay, then twenty-four hundred dollars would be for the entire year.
Jaw first, I think the jaw first.
Actually, no, vote on me, it's a bigger problem, more money. We have, uh, we could vote ourselves to adjust, sorry, the step level of it.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry.
I know you guys work.
Then again, we're just talking about free cash. There we go.
Or we adjust it for both, actually.
Um.
Why do we not go on that thing? Because it's not.
Well, just, uh, I'd like to bring up the building department as well.
Okay, yeah, I apologize, my understanding is gonna be other folks here, it's just.
You're the only one brave enough.
Um, yeah, I don't know if you recall, so we had the discussion, we went back and forth on the building department, I really think it's worthwhile taking another look at. I think, uh, you look at the certification, you look at, and you thought before our windows actually, I think Bob, you mentioned.
Commissioner, he's not, he's not a building inspector.
Right. You have an assistant who's doing the work of a commissioner, not there. And I think, uh, I think we should be revising.
And I believe, okay, so we got the building commission, we're in the building department, the library sent something over, did you think?
Yeah, I think, uh.
Yes.
Yeah, the.
We have something from the senior center.
Now, that's not a great adjustment, that's just adding hours.
Yeah, that's just an hour shift, so what, what is happening is I find myself with a significant number of resigning staff right now. So I just had a resignation and I am now going to have another one at the end of the year.
Just on your calendar.
A calendar year. So that, um, the first resignation is a town funded position, the second one is a grant funded position. So what I have done is shifted some of the responsibilities of the program coordinator over to our administrative assistant. Um, and I have used, because there will be some surplus in that grant, for various reasons, through the end of the year, I've been able to pay the administrative assistant using grant funding for the additional hours to take on the additional responsibilities. At the end of the calendar year, I would be looking to essentially hire a new person to fill that position. So I would need that grant money to pay a position. And I would like to continue to pay the admin assistant those extra five hours to keep those responsibilities. However, in light of all that, I really sent it over as a placeholder, because there's, I also have the potential to kind of revamp the whole front office staff at this time, because I'm going to have two vacancies. So I may come forward for July first with a completely different proposal for a new titled staff person. Um, but from January to July, I'm looking for those five hours to continue to be funded to that position.
Wasn't there a concern also that the, the grant program wasn't keeping pace with the increase in salary?
The grant cannot keep up with the salary, so when the Collins report analyzed that, that position, um, it was analyzed at eighteen dollars an hour, the grant is only able to fund fifteen dollars an hour for eighteen hours a week. So it is not a benefited position, um, so finding someone to fill a position is a little bit more challenging when the salary is low and there are no benefits. So I do have a few options, whether or not to ask the town to put more money toward that position and augment the grant to make that position more attractive to someone, um, that's an option. But again, I have another option, I've been gathering job descriptions from other senior centers for program coordinators and admin type positions that are kind of a joint position, um, more responsibility is a bigger position. Um, but then we go back to not wanting to lose an actual body in the front office, because, you know, right now I have five staff people, and so if two people are, you know, I mean, you're down to people and schedules are such that, today there were two of us in the building and then it was just me for a while, so I have a lot of juggling to do. So my request simply is for five hours from January to June thirty.
On the other, other hand, okay, so what kind of money we talking about?
Uh, like twenty-three hundred dollars.
Okay, we gotta fight it out, we have twenty-three hundred, you guys.
Which position was that that you're referring to, for that hours?
Oh, for the hours, it's the admin assistant volunteer coordinator. Essentially, yes, but she's not with us anymore.
No, I mean, that position.
That position.
So we got assessor. Against library. We have building.
Let's see. All right, these are coming up.
No, we're gonna decide on them next week.
Yeah, I think we can probably walk her down on those, I'd just like to get the numbers locked in. I have no problem, personal recommending, but I'd like to see, you know.
Let's get the numbers together, we'll do it all next week, assessor, library, building, and. Let's get the numbers together, we'll do it all next week, assessor, library, building, and. That's what I need to. Right? We have a, we have a select one report.
Uh basically, the housing authority, we met, but we didn't have a forum, so it was just generally signing bills. Obviously, you're aware of all what's happening, good planning at this point. Uh COA, there is no meeting in August, but I think he's got some stuff happening. And it's pretty much it from my group, right?
Uh Parks and Rec met Tuesday, um they had a volunteer from the community step up to fill the position to see if it's something he'd be interested in, I think he's going to do it, they're gonna train him this week, give him up the speed and what he need to do. Uh just a temporary thing until the end of the year, then they're gonna revisit what they wanna do next year as far as positions for that home.
And we're still waiting to hear, are we still waiting?
I haven't heard anything.
No, for the.
Yeah, we have, Jane sent the information to them, pictures, but.
But they, I'll kind of, yeah, but I mean, they come in twice. Get that back, quickly, uh historical had a great open house at the Academy Hall. I think it was pretty well attended, a lot of people enjoyed it. But we don't think we have a date locked in yet on the painting, scraping and painting.
So in historical commission has a meeting coming up in September, public forum for their warrant article they're working on.
Yeah, um I talked to Doug today about that, and we're on offense about uh that warrant article. We would prefer to present that in the spring. And not for special one.
I'm not sure, I don't, I'm not sure they were attending it for a special, but just to get the word out and speak.
And that might, and that might be if they wanna do a presentation, but typically, and again, something like this, they're doing a lot of hard work, and it's good work, but you don't want the perception that we're getting it, sliding it through a special town meeting with a low attendance. And.
My understanding is it's just a public.
And that's a great idea, more public presentation.
Yeah, that's the one in September, right, September.
That's what I understand also, having talked to Connie, that that they know that if they s- submit a similar proposal, it's going to get voted down. So if they have any chance of of succeeding, they have to undertake uh information education to the public.
Non administrative report?
Uh we've been over uh much of this, uh police union negotiations are underway, we've had two sessions already. Uh I mentioned to you that the position of a health inspector was offered to the top candidate who refused. The water line project is moving ahead, the test moorings have been done on August the twenty fifth. Ty and Bond was here as an observer, we also received the first invoice uh for thirty one thousand dollars, which will be paid from ARPA funds, Amoresco is not yet uh finished with uh fish and wildlife. Town council is developing a warrant article for the uh special town meeting to create a municipal light plant. Meeting of the gambling commission is on September the ninth to approve our sidewalk project on Summers Road. Uh the highway department, I mentioned this earlier, the highway department, the problem with the radio connection to Wilbraham Control has been resolved. Uh the disability law center has sent a letter, uh which I believe I forwarded to you, uh among other things, requiring some training uh in the requirements of the disability statute. Uh we are working on Cumberland Farms, uh talking with the building and commissioner fairly regularly. He has sent a violation notice, uh has not received a response yet. He sent it to the American headquarters of Cumberland Farms, which is still in the United States in Maynor. The London company, the London owner apparently allows uh the headquarters in Massachusetts to continue to manage the operations. Uh our next step is to convene a committee of inspectors and to go over and uh basically cite various violations uh at that building. If they continue to be non responsive, then uh Wendell said that we're just gonna mandate proper boarding and securing and other steps that are necessary to make the building safe. But that's all coming their way, if we don't get a response, uh John had asked for the parking lot outside to be striped. Uh it is, it has been done.
In COA as well.
Pardon?
And the thieves.
And the senior center, yes. We did have another Zoom conference relative to the Amden County Retirement Board problems. And the emergency management committee did meet several times uh on the twentieth and twenty first, as you know. Uh that's the report, I also, I also I'm gonna send you what I call a day in the life. Uh it is a a log, and Doug has already seen it, it's a logging of all the activities in the office uh last Wednesday. So I'm gonna send that out to you tomorrow, so you can see basically what goes on here uh at typical day.
From whose perspective?
That mine, basically, people coming into the office or or asking for all variety of services.
Anything else?
That's it.
I would entertain a motion to recess, it's beginning late hour, I would entertain a motion to recess.
That part is wrong?
Yeah. I would, because of the late hour, I would, I would, I would entertain a motion to recess these for this elective meeting to a date and time certain on September first, six P M uh in the auditorium, at which time we will take up all matters before us. Including executive session.
So I have a uh negotiating session tomorrow with the police union of councilmen.
Yeah.
Because we don't, we have to go over.
We have to go over.
Tell them the board, last so long, we couldn't make any decisions, so we need to. I'll make that motion.
All in favor? The one recess, we're telling them.
The Wednesday.
The Wednesday, no clocking, so.
No problem.
It's no problem.
Is that uh September first, is that here or T W B?
Here.
That's a T W B.
When you're posting.
Yeah, the continuance is at T W B. Correct, T W B. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, it's September one, September one, yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.